All right.
Mediation must have gone bad.
Our workshop for City of Odessa for June 24, 25 is beginning at 3 o'clock PM according to the Apple iPhone. Call this meeting to order. Councilman Hay, would you lead us in a prayer? If you're able, please stand.
Father, we just, we thank you for this day, Father. We thank you for the wake-up call this morning, Father, for each and every person that's in this room, Father. We know, Father, that, that without you, Father, we don't wake up, Father. And that, God, you, that you got this city, Father, and everything that, that they do, Father, everything that we do up here too, Father, is guided by your hand, Father. Lead us in the right direction, Father. And, Father, allow us to have our disagreements, Father, but allow us, Father, to agree, Father, in the end, Father, that, that there's a decision for this city because that's exactly what you want, Father. And, Father, we just say thank you for these men and women up here, Father, who give their lives, Father, to, to serve this city, Father, and all of the people in this, this audience here, Father, and all the people in this city who serve. Father, we ask for protection over each and every one, Father, that you open their eyes, Father, that you guide them every day in their walk. And we say all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please proceed. Thank you, Councilman. All right, let's move to Agenda Item Number Three, Review and Discuss the Courthouse Plan. I see Judge Fawcett. I saw Commissioner Gardner where he went. I see Mr. Henderson. Welcome.
We got Team Ector County here. Well, good, good afternoon. Sorry, it was morning this morning when we began Commissioners Court and we just adjourned a couple hours ago. But I do want to give some updates. We, we did pass this morning, the notice to proceed for our design build team to move forward with building the courthouse at the post office site. We were able to do that because we entered into an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, with the United States Postal Service to move them from their current site into what is going to be our future parking garage. They will be in the first floor of that parking garage and we will, we'll begin demolition of their future parking garage site and we'll talk a little bit about that here in a second. Once we build that, we demo the current site, build that parking garage, get them moved over, we'll demolition the current post office site and then begin working on going vertical for the courthouse. So, here's the map as I had discussed last workshop session, that this is a rough layout. Again, this was done by Park Hill. You'll see the date on there, 10/31/2024. A few things have changed since that time. The parking garage is more than likely going to be, rather than that rectangle being east-west, it is going to be most likely north-south on the east side of Hancock Avenue. That is so that we can build that while the post office continues to operate. There is one last little bit. They have a vehicle maintenance facility, a VMF, that's right in between where we'd be putting the parking garage and the, and where their current operations are, that we currently are planning to build into the parking garage facility. But if we can find them an off-site location for less than or something equitable to what we are currently building out, we could put them at a separate site and that could reorient that parking garage to where it would then be on the north side. And again, that rectangle would be east-west oriented as we see. But you'll notice that we have the courthouse shown there, where the current post office facility is. And then the library is in the city block where our current health department and jury parking is. And then north of there, you'll see what we are calling Permian Park. Again, that is not a name that we, anybody's come up with, it is just a name, where the current courthouse is. And that will be the final phase of this at the end of the production after we have moved all of our facilities into the new courthouse and then we knock down the courthouse and then begin developing that green space. We do not know whether or not we're going to maintain the surface parking on the northwest corner there at Grant and Fourth. That is one that we had put in there in case that is some type of design that we want. That is something that we will want to discuss with y'all. We have firecracker fandango coming up. Imagine firecracker fandango on this city block and a half for City of Odessa residents. And so, what do we want that green space to look like? You know, we're open to anything. Do we want surface parking there? It's where we can have food trucks and surface parking for residents? Or what do we want that to look like? We're relatively agnostic on that. But this is the general layout that we are looking at. Again, the, the south side, the surface parking there for the library and for the courthouse. Again, we're still at the early stages of the civil engineering on all of that. We, you know, that Second Street, that's, which is Business 20, which is quite the, the robust roadway. So, how we specifically, we're going to conduct some traffic studies. LCA is going to work on some of that to make sure that we have a, a good flow of traffic into the site. We don't want anybody getting rear-ended trying to pull in there to go for Children's Day at the library. So, this is our, our general layout. You will notice that Texas Avenue will no longer be Texas Avenue, south of Fourth Street, all the way down to Second Street. We'll own both sides of those roadways. And as y'all are aware, we have that ability to close off those streets. We will petition y'all and discuss those as we move forward. In doing so, that adds significant footage, you know, space for us to have that green space. It made no sense to have a roadway that intersected there. It really added quite a bit. And then also Third Street, we look at closing. This plays into some discussions that date back several years in a city master plan, downtown master plan about a festival street, perhaps off Jackson Avenue. And so, by having that kind of L shape, if you'll see that, that, that can provide some options there. And so, again, this is still a rough draft drawing and we, we open up for any type of commentary. So, this is looking from the south, really the southwest as to what that looks like in 3D imagery. And again, the library will most likely look quite similar to that design. However, the courthouse, again, that was just a blocking and stacking that we did. Don't get too loyal to what that courthouse is going to look like. We have different opinions on whether or not we want a more modern, a more traditional. Santa Fe is one that we've talked about, what type of design that courthouse looks like. We're still opening it up for feedback from the public as to what that looks like. But you can kind of see here what that looks like. And then here is what I call the, the oaf perspective from the top floor of the Marriott, looking out south. And so, you'll see that we will have quite the large green space there. Again, a city block and a half of green space that is with our library and our courthouse facing north, looking out onto that green space. This is just a street level view. And again, another one. And these were just some, some real rough draft drawings. This, again, is most likely what the library will look like. They've put out some figures. They've done a 3D imagery kind of fly-through of that facility. It's, it's very neat. It is a modern library. They, they have received their first check as of this morning, the nonprofit team. Yay. And again, that one is a public-private partnership. The library is not coming out of Certificate of Obligation Funds. It's out of a public-private partnership in which we are engaging where the county agreed to pay up to half of it in in-kind donations and in, in general fund, fund balance. And so, we're looking at, it's about a $45 million build. We're carrying about a $15 million contingency. And so, that could be an overall $60 million project that, again, the, the Library Foundation is, is going out and speaking with local nonprofits and other donate philanthropists for donations. Then again, this is one of our four different concepts for the courthouse. You'll see that this is from essentially where that surface parking area is, looking in a southeastern manner at the courthouse. Again, it depends on how we lay out the courtrooms, how we lay out the free flow of, of operations. Right now, our DLR group is our lead architect on our design build team. They're conducting interviews with all of our department heads and elected officials at the courthouse right now, talking about how they operate their offices and are there efficiencies? Are there better workflows? Just because you've always done this does not mean that you should always have to do that. One of those is a jury call room. We're seeing that there are counties that gotten away from that because you're having to build a large-scale space about the size of this room, even bigger for those jury call rooms, whenever there's ways you can do it digitally. And so, you could save quite a bit at $150 a square foot for a room of this size, you can save quite a bit of money. So, we're looking at all of those operational efficiencies. And so, we're still at the drawing book on that. So then, again, this is what we would have, the, the bottom one is if the, from the south, if the roadway were to continue. And then, again, the north is from a northern aspect. And that is it for the presentation. We can go through the pictures. These are the brief pictures I've got for you. I can answer any questions. We just wanted to make sure all of y'all saw this imagery and knew that, again, that that Permian Park is going to be a park for City of Odessa residents. I think that y'all should have some stake in, in what type of events we have there, what we want that to look like. Again, City of Midland has Centennial that has kind of a rolling hill there that offers a good thing for concerts for folks to be up there. It's also great for kids. Kids can really enjoy just having an elevation change rolling down. It's very simple. They also have a splash pad over there. I don't know if that's something we're going to want. Those, that may be what's designed right next to OC. And again, we're going to talk with Dr. Williams, we already have, about how we better utilize the OC facility. Right now, it's more eastern-facing. Those bathrooms have access to the interior of the facility on the east. Do we come up with a better design or utilize that plumbing infrastructure to have western-facing bathroom facilities? These are all conversations that are a little bit further down the road, but we are currently having them. We want to have all stakeholders at the table. This is a project that impacts all of our taxing entities and we want everybody's input. We don't operate in silos in Ector County.
Judge Fawcett?
Yes, sir.
Looking at the bottom left-hand corner, there's a rectangle white. Is that the Boy Scout Building?
Yes, sir. That is the Henderson Drug Building. Yes, sir. And that will, through the life of the construction of the courthouse, we are going to be leasing that to our design build team. And they, at their cost, they are going to be improving that facility. Right now, it's got significant termite damage and some roof damage. And so, they're going to headquarters out of that site. And then after the life of that, then they will turn it back over to the county. We'll have a new and improved facility because, again, it is in poor condition. And then, we are open, we've had different folks talk to us about what they want that to be. We've had folks talk about a visitor's center, although y'all are discussing that in a few short agenda items. We've had some other nonprofits, the Daughters of the American Revolution have spoken with us about it. And there's some other folks who are interested in it. And, and we at the county have some plans. We are fortunate that our Commissioners Court Attorney, Mr. John Henderson, it is his family's facility, your great.
My great uncle.
Great uncle was the one that, and it's very cool. We have a, a picture in, back in the hallway behind Commissioners Court of, what year was that? 19?
Oh, the building's dated 06.
It's 06 and there was, there, everybody in the City of Odessa was out there on the street for this big panoramic picture and you can see the Henderson Drug Building behind there. And so, it's got some good history and what we want to do with that, we don't know yet. But I think it's, it's something that, it is an asset, so we will be preserving that facility.
That was reason for my question.
Yes, sir. Yeah, John, John will let us knock it down, I'll tell you that much, and nor do we want to.
Neither will I, because I didn't realize it in that bloodline somewhere you and I related, because Bill Henderson was my dad's uncle.
He was one of my great uncles.
Yeah. It's good to meet you. See, I told you I was as old as you are. No, he claims to be the eighth, so, Henry, Henry the Eighth. Anyway, it's kind of funny. So, I, this got meaning for me as well, so I sure don't want to see it torn down.
Judge, what we'll need, I think, moving, I mean, as, as you begin to move forward, we'll need to get with the city people. I mean, obviously, underneath Texas, there's sewer and water and this. So, I don't really know how it needs to work. Probably work with our city attorney and your engineers and all the right people. I guess I need your people to contact ours about what will all need to happen as this project begin, I mean, obviously not today, but as the project begins to move forward. So, we go in a, in a, I guess, an efficient way of, of moving, like, I'm assuming we're going to have to move a sewer line and a water line, some utilities. So, anyway, just get, make sure our people are working together. But give us plenty of time to get, figure out where the water lines are going to have to move, obviously, by Jackson or, or somewhere, wherever, I don't know. That's outside of my knowledge. I just don't get to move them, that's all I know.
And that's why today's decision was a good one because we've, we've been kind of doing some background, but until we solidified the actual position, we've held off on that civil engineering aspect. Now that we have said 100%, that's where the site's going to be, we've now turned the design build team loose. And fortunately, on our design build team, our civil engineer is LCA. So, John Nangraph has intimate knowledge of all of this engineering and he knows how to work within the city well. And so, by turning them loose today, we had a few other notice proceeds on the demolition and on everything else. And so, it, it will turn them loose to then begin engaging city staff and talking about all the different city assets, the water sewer, even electric. We've spoken with Encore that they're well aware that there's going to be some modifications there. And so, we're, we're, we're at the right stage that we're, we're ahead of things. I like to be ahead of things in, in all aspects.
When is the, when do you anticipate things starting to happen, like teardowns? And are we talking a couple months or longer?
Yeah, so, our goal is on the Hancock properties, so, east of where the current post office is, is to begin demolition on those in October. That's, that's our current date, is, is Q4 of this year. We will be sending out those letters. We authorize Ms. Prentice, our county attorney, to, to send out those letters to them, letting them know, hey, time to make sure you've got a new, a new site ready to go. And then, we will begin the demo in October. Our goal is then to begin, after the demo, to begin with the pre-cast of the, of the parking garage. That way, we can get the post office moved into there at the end of Q1, beginning of Q2 of next year. Because the sooner we can get the post office moved into that parking garage, the sooner we can knock down the post office and begin getting that field ready for, uh, build the courthouse. And by that time, the good thing is that, you know, by that time, we'll have all of, we'll, we'll be at, at CD. You know, we still are, we're in schematic design right now. We have a few other steps to get there on the engineering architectural side of things. And it'll time up perfectly by the time that we raise that facility, that all the architectural documents will be prepared for us to start going vertical. The big, the big kind of outlier, again, is the library and, and Mr. Ogilvy's on that library committee and has done a great job championing that project. They're going to be on a separate timeline, but parallel timeline. And so, again, the first demolition will be in October on that, that East Hancock. And then following that, we'll be looking at the health department, which is where that little circle is on library on the east side. We'll have to knock that down to be, to have the space ready for them. And then, since we're going to be taking over that jury parking lot area where a lot of our employees also park, we're going to then have to knock out the East Texas Strip is what I call it. So, from Fourth Street down to Third Street, along the east side of Texas Avenue where there's a bail bonds facility, our adult probation, and there are some attorneys there. We own that whole strip. So, again, we're going to send them notice letters. That'll be the phase two of the demo. We'll knock that down and have some surface parking in the meantime throughout the, the build phase. And then, once it's done being built, then we'll go back in and fill it in and make it green.
Good. Counsel, any questions?
Judge Fawcett, I do have just an interesting, and this is way down the road.
Yeah.
But, you know, there's a lot going on at a courthouse, calendar-wise. So, when the new courthouse is built, I'm looking at transitioning to the new courthouse, physically taking product and everything from the old to the new. Are you looking at phasing that by offices? How, what do you think? What's that look like and how much downtime could the courthouse experience?
On, on the move?
Just on the move, physical move?
So, we, we don't anticipate any downtime is our goal, is to really do it in phases. That's, that's correct. And there, we have kind of put a hold on buying any new furniture at the courthouse. We're not making any modifications to the current courthouse. We don't want to put any more lipstick on that pig. We've already put enough on there. Starting to look like a little Miss Piggy. But we will, we'll slowly phase it over. We, we do have FFNE, all of the furniture and equipment into the Certificate of Obligation Funds to fully furnish the new courthouse. But the good equipment and the good desk and everything else that we have, we will transfer over. But our goal is to make it to where we don't have any downtime.
That's amazing.
Sir?
It's amazing.
Yeah. It's, again, having this design build team going at it that way, having the construction experts and the architect experts. And then, I can't compliment our, our Commissioners Court enough, between Commissioner Gardner, Commissioner Hall being an electrical contractor, master electrician who's, who deals in projects. I mean, the guy knows exactly what HVAC unit we should use. He's checking on wires. I mean, this guy's going to be all over this project. And we're, we're going to be very detail-oriented. And, and the DB team is very strong in that. And that's the good thing. Your typical design bid-build method, you just turn architects loose to go draw you something. And then, the, the construction team comes back and they're like, why would you ever do this? That doesn't make sense in practical terms. Instead, they're both at the table. And so, we've already seen a lot of efficiencies there. Heck, we saw it out at our Coliseum on the design build, that we were going to be just redoing cinder block bathrooms that anytime we had a plumbing issue, we would have had to knock out the cinder block and re, repipe it and then put cinder block back in. Instead, we're now making a, a bathroom chase there. So, having all of those folks at the same table has been a terrific method that we're really proud of. And so, we think it'll be the smoothest, smoothest transition possible. The technology aspect, again, will, it'll be one that we'll, we'll make sure we do it slowly, that we have all of our internet up and running. Because, again, Odyssey runs all of our software in our court systems. We want to make sure all that's up and running. But we think that it should be a relatively smooth transition. But we all know anybody who's ever moved their home, you know, that, that's a bit of a challenge. This is a, this is a big move. This is going to be 260,000 square feet of move.
Do we need to set you up some dumpsters outside?
Yeah. Yeah. And, and a good thing on that is, we actually, and this was a pretty wise allocation out of American Rescue Plan Act funds, we allocated $10 million to, to a firm called CO File to digitize all of our archives with our district clerk, our county clerk and our sheriff's office. And I did that knowing that, that we were going to see this day when we were going to have to move to a new facility. And rather than building, again, empty warehouse space to house all of these documents, I went and saw one up in Potter County, they have a massive room in their first floor that is nothing but documents for their clerks' offices. We don't have to program that. We're digitizing all of that. And so, we had the forethought in our first year to do the CO File project, in '23, we did that allocation. That was one that we knew it would guarantee we're going to save more than $10 million in space. And so, that was a big one that, that we took on. And so, we are going quite digitally. The challenge is, there's a specific law that prior to 1950, they're considered historical documents. You must preserve those. And then, certain probate and different things in the statutory courts, you have to preserve. And so, that's minimal storage that we're going to have at the facility. But we're really going to save taxpayer dollars in, in how digital we've gone in Ector County.
I just have a question, really not pointing towards you, but I have a lot of questions coming to me. What are we going to do for a post office? May I do, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so, it's going to be in the first floor of that parking garage that you see. So, it'll be.
I just heard several stories that they're going to the airport, they're going to 52nd. Are we still going to have it downtown?
Yes. That's what we're talking about today, Councilman. Is it is going to be on the first floor of that parking garage?
Post office in there and then they're going to tear the post office down. So, there's never not going to be a post office.
I just, I just have, hear a lot of rumors.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, and, and we spoke with their union boss, who, who gave me a call and he was a little bit concerned. But we, we will be, they, they will not miss a day. They're going to begin moving on a Friday and have it completed on a Monday. Isn't that what we said, John, something like that? They, they cannot be down. And we anticipate that move, that's why it times up well, is there's a certain date in January that they wouldn't move before. And it's through the holiday season, that's when they see most of the post office. So, January to February is when we're going to hope that we have that pre-cast, that, that build out prepared. But that first floor, it's pretty neat. What we're looking at, that first floor would be 24-foot tall ceilings of a USPS facility that will be brand-new and it'll be something that I think a lot of folks are going to be proud of in downtown Odessa.
Anybody else? If not, Judge, we appreciate your time today.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you for working with you.
Thank you all.
All right. Let's go to Agenda Item Number Four, Discuss City Financials. Kayla? Kayla?
We get called worse, so that's okay. Kaylee's passing out the actual investment report. I apologize for not getting this to you a little early. We've been a little tied up with budget meetings. They've been going on all day. Aaron can testify to that. What Kaylee's passing out is very similar to what we're putting up on the PowerPoint, just this way I'll remember what y'all are looking at. So, thank you for having us up here. Like I said, today, I'm sharing our investments with you. One of the things that I'm sure you're aware of, but I want to just reiterate, is municipalities have to follow very restrictive guidelines on what we can invest in. So, when you're looking at a municipality portfolio, don't expect to be overwhelmed with excitement. There's, we have to be very cautious with the taxpayer dollars. So, just keep that in mind. So, on that very first page you're looking at, the investment summary report, very simple. Shows you what we had at the end of March, what we have at the end of April. The difference is like 2.3 million, 2.2 million. And that comes from, you'll see the line underneath that says "from purchases." It's not really purchases, that's just the investment language. It's revenue that's come into our bank. When we receive cash, it goes into our tax pool investment account. Then you'll see the next one that says "from sales." Again, that's really not from sales. That's from all the money that we use for our AP payroll, our daily operating comes from these investment funds. That way, they stay in there to get as much return as possible. On the next page, oops, did I go too far? Where am I going, Dahlia? Judge Fawcett's way better than mine. It went out of order.
Keep going back.
Okay. Okay. The next two pages are the detailed portfolio. There's a lot of information on Pages Two and Three. So... I've gone through and made a little summary, this one that I couldn't find. What this summary I'm showing you for up on the screen just does a comparison. I took the weighted average at the beginning and the weighted average at the end and got a difference. So, on our local government investment funds, it changed just .01%. It went down just a little bit. Bank strictly deposits, they don't really change. That stayed at 4.09. The savings and money market went down .15%. So, those rates of returns are all like 4.36, 4.09, 4.28. The best way to compare where if we're doing good by the market is to look at the 13-week Treasury bill. So, I pulled that amount as of today and that is 4.18. So, according to the standards set for municipalities, our investments are doing a decent return. Just out of curiosity, I looked at last year because I know that our investment income has been significantly higher than it has been in the past. This time last year, the local government investment pool's weighted interest rate was 5.34. So, we're losing some of our momentum, but that's what we have. This next page just shows you the same information in a different format, just a little simplified. Just shows you our beginning balances, it gives you a chart, kind of explains where the majority of our funds are invested. The biggest thing I wanted to share with y'all, though, is where all these funds are. Like, there's a difference in the cash we have and what we can actually do with the cash we have. So, this is just a very high-level view. Our general fund and restricted funds, funds that we have already, they have been spoken for, they can't be used for anything else, is the 197 million. And unrestricted, we have about 87 million. Please keep in mind that this is based off of current data, what has come in, what has come out. This is not necessarily what we're going to see at the end of the year. It's just like your own investments, it matters on what you spend and what you bring in. The water sewer fund, which is our enterprise funds, they're restricted, is 70, almost 73 million. Unrestricted is right at 66 million. Then we have solid and liquid waste. The restricted there is nine million. Our unrestricted balance in that is a negative 2.9. So that's one of them that we're aware of that and we're looking at different cost measures on that. Special revenue, this is anything that we bring in, um, stormwater, hotel motel. I think I threw golf in there, things, things of that nature. The restricted is 1.6 and the unrestricted is 25.9. That unrestricted word's a little bit deceiving because within those funds, there are restrictions. They just haven't been earmarked yet. Hot funds is a great example. Then our internal services, this is things like equipment services, our IT to, equipment services, IT department, risk, things like that, that we do not make a profit, but within our individual departments, we use these funds. So restricted is 16.5 and our unrestricted is 16.3. The majority of that restricted is going to be things that we've invested in for like vehicles, um, different improvements. Purchases, risk is a big part of that, things we have tied up for claims and things like of that nature. And then that, all that totals up to our 490 million. So that was a real quick overview. Um, are there any questions about these investments?
I have one, but it's just a lack of knowledge really, why I'm asking. On the solid liquid waste funds, where you have a negative under unrestricted, wouldn't that drop to zero? How would it go negative?
So how that works is we take the total, that's a good question. We take the total fund balance. And when I, when we're looking at, I take off what we absolutely have to hold there. And you're right, you would think that would go into the zero, but we're trying to reflect that unrestricted, just so we can visibly see it. You're correct. That's a good question.
Accountability.
Pure transparency. Yes, sir.
Can we move money out of internal service to make that a positive number or any other fund that's on here to make that a positive number?
So you can move funds, move fund balances between funds. You can do that. There are some guidelines and some restrictions to that, but you can do it. Is there a need to do it? Not necessarily, because those restricted funds, they also include the stabilization we're required to have. The, I think we have it at 90 days. Or 60 days, 90 days, 90 days we're required to have in retainage. So when you look at it from that standpoint, there's not really a need to do that yet.
Is this for purchase of the trucks that we did or is something that made that go?
That would be in internal services. Um, except for the brand, I think they all came out of internal services, which would be equipment services. So no, sir. The majority of that honestly, um, is our landfill. That, the, where you have to maintain it and you have to have that deferred liability on your books.
Thirty years.
Yeah, you know about that?
Yes.
That's the main reason that one is gone into the negative.
I have a different question. Uh, I know this is an investment summary, but I'm more of a simple guy. And so if I understand that our budgets are at 270, 270 million a year, right? So roughly we need to make 22.5 a month and, and my question is how would our expenses, you know what I'm saying? I mean, are we balanced? That's more of my question, month to month. Is it relatively the same or has it changed drastically?
So when you're looking at municipality fund, and we've talked about this today during our budget meetings, you're going to see a higher shift towards the end of, of a fiscal year.
Okay.
That is, we are trying, we actually had this conversation today, so I'm glad you brought it up. We're trying to shift from that. Um, it, that's not how we want to do things. We don't want to sit on funds that we need to be expending. That is an old school governmental mindset.
Just holding the expenses till the end of the year, then spending everything in the budget?
Just because you never, and, and, and that comes with reason in the past. Um, and our, I don't believe our city management has this philosophy at all, but previously if there was an emergency, you know, you wanted to have those funds, well, that's what our contingency fund is for. Um, if you don't expend your funds, you're afraid you're going to get them taken away from you. So even if you didn't need it, you would spend it. Those are the things we're trying to get away from. Um, Mr. Smith and Kaylee and I have talked about that today, you know, what we need to do to avoid those things. I can say Odessa is not that bad about doing that. We do pretty well at spacing it out through the year. We do better than a lot of cities, in my opinion, for the ones I've seen. Uh, now your revenue, since our property tax comes in all in one lump sum, that skews it. That's one of the reasons when we look at the revenue to actual reports, they don't always look the way you would think they would in a business. Um, but our expenditures are pretty average, especially when you take our biggest. And what's our biggest expenditure? Personnel.
Yeah, personnel.
So that's, that stays pretty flat.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we sure appreciate y'all's time and effort on this project.
Thank you. And we are going to have a financial report every month and we're getting better every time. So thank y'all for this.
We do, it is appreciated.
Yes, sir.
And noticed. All right. I'm going to call on Monica right now. Gent Avenue, five, the update on our see click fix and the chatbot, Jet the Jack Rabbit.
All right. Jet the Jack Rabbit. It's catchy, huh? Thank you all for voting, those of, uh, of y'all who voted. And I'm going to give you some background. The good news is Jet the Jack Rabbit is up. I do want to explain some of the differences. Craig has been involved in the process and I appreciate that because it lets them know how serious we are with getting this project done. So Jet the Jack Rabbit, we're going to give y'all some insight into that as well as see click fix and some changes we had to make with that.
Can we still, is it able to be downloaded yet? Because it wasn't last week.
She'll get to that.
Oh, okay. I need to listen to be quiet, okay?
Let me pop this up here. So we're going to start with kind of, we want to remind you, hold on, I gotta change the button. Okay. So we kind of wanted to remind you what the chatbot was. We're going to be talking about customer service. That is one thing I know that you guys have talked a lot about. Um, we went to TML on Friday. They talked about that. And so the communications team does talk a lot about how can we provide customer service to the next level? Not just playing the, and, and we joke, hey, go here, go here, go here. What can we do to directly answer those questions? So the chatbot is going to help in that area. So we'll see click fix, even though it's going to get a new name. Um, so that's some of the things that we're doing. You may notice on the front of our website, we have a new video. Eric, uh, spiced it up. He added some more color. So we're always looking for ways to make it look better. Our new app is going to be called see click fix, uh, sorry, Team Odessa, and we're going to tell you why here in a second. So let's first talk about the chatbot. Uh, on the backend, and I'm going to show you the backend, we are getting a lot of questions. We want to make clear the chatbot, Jet the Jack Rabbit is not like Google. It's not like Grok. Do y'all know what Grok is? It's kind of the new Elon Musk thing that's happening where you can pretty much ask any question. As you can see, we were asked questions, what time is it in California? Global ice age again. Unless we plug in some of those on our website, Jet the Jack Rabbit doesn't know what to say. So here's the back of it to understand what we've been doing. So we're feeding its brain, okay? Custom URLs, discover Odessa. We were able to easily add this one in there. I know Craig, you were asking a lot of questions. Odessa Arts, we add that one in there. Some of them though, we couldn't. You can see it says crawling. The reason for that is they have blockers on those, on their websites. So we're going to try to work with the IT departments to see if there's ways we can make them talk.
Say, where'd they go? They were all just here?
Yeah, they left. So like the Ector County Sheriff's Office, if you see some of these, uh, we put in the Ector Environmental Enforcement. We wanted to put in some of the agencies that are close by into his brain. Um, but again, with IT challenges, sometimes we have that. So we wanted to explain why that was happening. We do have a place where we can directly train some answers and we've done that. So if we think it's something that they're going to be getting on a regular basis, we can train his brain to get that. Also, say you ask, when is the next council meeting? The good thing is the calendar has been updated. So now if you type that in, it should say June 24th. So you'll see that come up. Also, this is where we do our site crawl. Now, one of the big things that we found out, when we, uh, redid our website, we hit a lot of pages. We are looking at redoing our navigation because best practices is someone doesn't have to click more than two or three times. Remember our website used to be 5,000 pages. It's now 200 pages. So when we did that, we hid pages. Jet couldn't find them when they're hidden, so we had to unhide every page. So these are some of the obstacles we figured out along the way. That took a little bit of time, but so you understand the backend. Here is where we can go for analytics, but I know y'all are going to laugh here. So we will be looking at the knowledge. Okay. So let me go to live. People will ask us different questions. Whenever we ask about a person, and we're going to be putting this on best practices for Jet, ideally they want two names. And the reason for that is say the name Bill. People used to type Bill. It would jump to, hey, how do I pay my bill? So Jet needs both names. You can't just say who is Stoker or Stoker unless we train it. We can train it like that, but it makes it a little bit more complicated. So we wanted just to explain a little bit of the overview. We did add in the explanation for the hotel motel funds. Um, Mr. Smith approved that. So we have that on our website now. And so we will recrawl it. So here's again where the knowledge comes in. We recrawl, you can see crawling is in progress and that's how its brain is updated. So Jet has knowledge, but not like Google, not like Grok, um, with Elon Musk. So it's not quite at that level. I wish it was. Okay. So back to those questions. So there's Jet. Um, we voted, only 53 people voted. I wish more had. And it was very close though, because people liked the one mayor that you told me about that could have been a copyright issue. Um, we were debating, you know, do we contact Renee? This one won by two votes. So just so you know, um, how that happened, it suggested you ask Jet a question. So when you talk to Jet on our website, who is Councilmember Cornell? You need to be asking it a question. You need to use two names. Um, and then again, I told you about the blocking of the crawlers, which is one of the problems we encounter. So there's little Jet. Uh, Eric made some animation for us. Let's see, we can pull it up here. But we think he's going to be a really nice friendly character that people are going to like. We can change him at any time. Hold on, let me pull him up here. Okay, let's go to the animation so you can see him. So once we start promoting him, we think it's going to be a fun little character that people like. We did what was called a soft launch because again, we experience these glitches that you don't expect along the way. Um, but again, just efficient tracking and transparency to help make maneuvering the website a lot easier. We're going to have that under communications. So if you hover over communications, you can see that there. Team Odessa. So this is the issue we ran into. We bought see click fix from Civic, right? That name. When we submitted it to the App Store, Civic's been having problems. It denied us see click fix. So we just put it in the icon to say see click fix. We got denied again. Civic said this is something that's new that's happened to them. Um, so we came up with a different name, Team Odessa. It can change. Uh, Judge Fawcett was just here. We're in the process of talking about see click fix or Team Odessa for the county as well, finding a way to merge. Again, we're not working in silos anymore. We're finding ways to better work together because we know Ector County residents, a lot of times are commenting on our Facebook page, submitting things. So it could change. We wanted to get it in. And then again, as we start really promoting this, we can find ways exactly how we want to promote it. The other thing is that say someone has see click fix in Midland, they can submit it to Odessa. So Norma has been getting message after message and was questioning, what are these? So anytime people have a problem, they technically can submit it through City of Midland. We'd prefer they submit it through our website because we get better statistics from that. It'll show how many people are getting that done. And then that is it. Any questions?
So they're creating tickets on Midland's see click fix?
Yes.
In Odessa? How? Because they geo fenced it. You can't.
That's what Civic says, that they can put in our address and it comes to us. I don't know. I haven't tried it yet. Did you try it?
Promise you can't.
Civic says that you can put it in there, you can put Odessa and it'll come to us. They said it's for any of their see click fix apps. But they obviously, as you know from the email thread, have glitches with different things. So maybe it was a glitch.
When does it go live?
Hopefully by the end of the week. Yeah. So people can already submit tickets on our website. If you go to the very front of our website, it says Team Odessa. Report issues here, the very front where the big buttons are. Or you can hover over communications and you can see it. And it says Team Odessa webpage and app.
So you guys weren't doing all of the work on it?
We-
Have the third party help? Can you do a lot of this?
We did a lot of the work on it. We purchased it, but communications did the heavy lifting and I'm very, we worked a lot of weekends. Very thankful. I do have to give Civic credit. Um, our implementation lady, she was available. I was sending lots of messages and she certainly did her best to answer any questions that she could. So I'm really proud of my team. They're watching. Um, Eric back there. Um, we sat at the table. I felt like, you know, we were just hovering, trying to get it done. But of course we had glitches and everyone did a great job. But yes, our, our team implemented this.
So I thought it was just the Play Store that kicked it out.
Yes, but remember when we first submitted the name, the name got kicked out and then the picture was see click fix. It is the App Store. So you on the backend, I had to get all these documents signed and pay. Actually, I didn't have to pay for renewal because we're a government. But yes, they're the ones who reject us or renew us. And as you know, kind of like with those big places, it's hard to physically talk to somebody.
But I thought it was the Play Store, not the App Store.
The-
Google Play.
It is Google Play. Sorry.
So the App Store is fine. It was good.
No, the App Store wasn't fine because originally we want it to be six, see click fix, City of Odessa. We paid extra to be able to have it, because you know how MGO is under one, you type in the city in order to get to City of Odessa? Okay. So if you do MGO, like if you're doing the vendor, the food truck vendor stuff, MGO is one app where it's listed with different cities. We paid a little bit of extra so we could have our own app, so we wouldn't be under see click fix where you had to type in the name to find us.
It didn't work. I don't understand what that has to do with the App Store, but-
I can show you afterwards.
So it's not on the App Store either?
Not yet, but it's going to be.
This week?
Hopefully this week. She said, I mean, I already got the approval, already approved it, and now it's whenever they approve it on their end. But last time it didn't take more than a day.
They?
The Google Store where-
Apple?
It's, it's the Google Store is what it's, I think it's Apple altogether.
App Store and Play Store, Google, Apple.
Both. They're going to be in both.
Right. But right now it's in neither.
Right. It's in neither because they had to resubmit it because we got rejected because of using see click fix.
So all right, we're in a circle. All right. Thanks.
Sorry. I know it is. It's been a lot of back and forth with them.
Anybody have any questions?
One, Monica-
Yes, sir.
How are you going to roll this out to the public and when we start?
We want to make sure that our departments can use it correctly. For example, we had Nira who did a great job. She and our team came today and we were looking at any of the glitches. Um, we want to make sure that our employees can use it correctly. Dahlia is going to be monitoring it and overseeing which ones have been taken care of. So hopefully, I mean, you know, within, I'd like to do it soon, but within the month, we can have everyone trained so they feel comfortable. Because we don't want to put it in the public and, and people use it and then we fumble, you know? And that's where like sometimes we're very reluctant to market things too quickly because, you know, we didn't expect not to be able to use the name see click fix. So glitches happen along the way, just like with the chatbot. Um, and so you have to work through those first.
Okay. Anybody else?
That's good. I've got just a basic question.
Yes, sir.
I'm picking up that it's learning. As it goes, it's learning typical with AI, um, building its own database of questions. But you have asked each one of the departments for feedback as to what are their most common questions? And what is the result of that question, just to feed that data in. So we have all the basics.
Yes, sir. And we did that. We asked every single department head, hey, can you recheck your website? We took a screenshot of everything. And so I know it just kind of depends on their timeline and what they have going on. Um, but, because we can even, uh, teach it even more in the future. So for example, like police, we can give it its own chatbot and put most asked questions on their pages as well. We just wanted to take it in steps. Um, but yes, sir, we did ask for feedback for all the department heads and chiefs to see what they felt needed to be on there.
Easier than trying to figure it out yourself.
A lot easier. And the, the good things we will be able to see, as you can see on the backend, I showed you part of it, the analytics. So we can really see what is being asked and what's not being asked. And Craig, one other thing I wanted to show you on the backend, since you were asking about that. Um, let's see, so you can see the Apple Store. Hold on. I have it right here. This kind of gives you more insight. So on the last one, it shows you right there. So that's where we're talking about. And it's got a link on the example right there. So you can click and see all through them and you can see the other ones. It was in the last presentation I gave. Okay?
Okay.
Any more questions?
See you in none. Monica, thank you very much. Look forward to going live. All right, Gent Avenue, six. We, let me explain this real quickly. A couple of councilman asked questions, just about in general stuff. We're looking for a 30,000 foot view on kind of where we are on this. We're looking for a 30,000-foot view on kinda where we are on this. We don't need a long explanation, we just wanna kinda, just help us make sure we know where we are on certain projects. Scott, we'll start with you on the parking lot, garage or lot, I guess.
Parking lots.
Parking lots. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So I've got a C Clicks fix some parking lots here, so... Okay. So we have four different projects that Mr. Smith and I have been working on for the last few months. One is OPD Training West Parking Lot. That is currently owned by Medical Center Hospital. But we have an interlocal agreement with them that will allow us to utilize that facility, that parking lot, for 10 years. And then we'll have a one-year option to renew going forward from that. So we, we have done the engineering on that parking lot and it's ready to go. The second one is the OPD Parking Lot. And I know the chief is, is ready to get this one done, so he's tired of parking on Cleechy, so he gets his, his shoes pretty dirty, I think. So we do, we do have engineering out on that and we did receive engineered drawings this morning on that. So we've sent it up to our engineering, engineering department to, to take a look at those plans and, and see if we're ready to go out to bid on that one. The third one is Municipal Court Overflow Parking, which is at the corner of Second and 385. Used to be the old Farmer's Market area. So we wanna rehab that. What we wanna do is, 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 is crackshoot that and slurry coat that parking lot and re-stripe it. And then the final one is the Municipal Court and OPD Parking Lot, which is to the, directly to the east of Municipal Court and OPD. Same thing there, crackshoot and still coat that parking lot, so... Those are the four projects there. I wanna thank Monica for putting this together for me, so... That is the, the, the dirt parking lot we're using now at the training facility that's owned by Medical Center. Of course, this is the OPD Parking Lot where the parking structure was demolished.
When you say on the east, this one out here, we got the plans ready. Time-wise, what does that mean from plan to finished paving? Is it a week, a month? Longer, shorter?
What we hope to have is to you, either the second or the, first or the second meeting in July for approval. And then I had to visit with the contractor and, and see what, how fast they can move on that, so... Of course, we're gonna put the OPD Parking Lot first on the list, you know? That's, that's gonna be number one for them to accomplish. So these funds will come out of the 2019 certificate's operation. There's about $5.9 million still in that account. And that's where we intend to take those funds from.
Scott, real quick, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Wouldn't it be, didn't it make sense to bid all three of them at the same time?
Yes, sir, that's what we intend to do, yes, yes. We've got...
Because it's taken, so we, we approved all this back in February and...
Yes, sir.
I understand we've had some issues with getting drawings back, so...
The only, the only bid we're waiting on is that OPD Parking Lot, so...
Great.
They'll all go in as one package, we'll bring it to you. You can say do them all, or you can say do A, B, or C, and, and we'll proceed that in that manner.
Thanks, Scott.
Scott, on the aerial picture of the overflow parking area?
Yes, sir.
I noticed there was a lot of space between some buildings. There's one, I think it's somebody's law firm facing north.
Yes, sir.
And then there was a building facing, I think it was First Street. But between those two buildings, there's a lot of space. How, how much of that property actually does the city own? If you'll, yeah, let's see.
We own from Second Street all the way to First Street.
It's not just the next one?
The next one.
Yes, going south.
It has those weird things on it for, I guess it was used for Farmer's Market.
Yes, there was a second, there was a second on and off.
Will you be able to pause it? Yeah.
I'll bet one. Next one.
Next one, next one. It's that one.
Yeah.
That's just an oning on there.
That's just an oning, yes.
We own all the way to First Street.
We own all the way to First Street.
That's my question, you see the, the empty space between the buildings going west?
Yes, sir.
That's Charlie Oldes Law Firm or then wherever that is.
That's a law firm. We don't, we don't own that property.
It's private property?
Yes, sir.
That belongs to the city?
On the right side.
All right, I was just, I was just curious about that space going...
Sure.
East and west between the buildings.
Happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody else have any questions, Council? Have it done. Scott, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, y'all have a good day.
Joe, Yukon.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Let me add one thing before I get into mine. We have been working back and forth on the OPD Parking Lot with LCA. After lunch, we got some revised plans and they look good. So we're about ready to get back with Scott and get all that turned, so I think we're there.
Chief is smiling, so it must be good.
We had a few issues. We had some questions and did ask them to do, make some revisions, so that took a little time. Thank you.
Thanks, Dahlia.
I don't have any fancy slides, I just get up here and talk. But if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me. And, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about our projects. We're excited about everything we've got going on and am happy to, to let you know. Yukon widening. This is a project we've done some preliminary work on. It's looking at widening Yukon from 338 across to Faudry Road. That we've got right-of-way there, we've got 130-foot right-of-way that was actually dedicated in the eighties. We annexed the right-of-way in 2018, so it's now City Right-of-Way. It's currently just a two-lane county road, but it is a major connector across that part of town. So we've done some estimates on what it would take to build that. We're looking at, for a five-lane road, we're looking at about 16 million to build across there. 16.
16.
Yes, yes, sir.
That's less than I would've thought.
Yeah, Yukon, parts of Yukon are looking at seven-lane. Where we're building the Grandview Yukon Intersection, we're building that as seven-lane. To build a seven-lane across this stretch is about 22 million. But that probably wouldn't have to be done today. A five-lane would serve that area. A couple of things I wanna point out, only the right-of-way is in the city limits. If we're gonna build that, it would be advantageous to go ahead and, and do some more annexation. Because once that road's there, we're gonna be looking at a lot of commercial development on that road possibly. So it'd be good to, to consider getting that road in the city. In addition, there's no sewer. There is water all the way through there. So if we really want that area to develop, once we build the road, we're looking at sewer. And that's another 14, about 14 million. So build the road and sewer, it's about a $30 million project.
Did you say sewer, sewer and water?
Water's existing.
Water's already there.
We've got an 18-inch line that runs all the way down to Yukon and serves the Park Bell area.
And it's Yukon and Grandview?
No, from Loop to Faudry.
Yes, Loop to Faudry.
So how close is sewer to that?
Sewer will have to come from both directions just because of the grades. But, yeah, it'd be a pretty big project for sewer as well.
It's gonna be a problem.
It can be done. We've done preliminary design on it and feel like it would work.
Well, the five, the five-lane, you know, it, we, we do have, ODC has agreed to give us 20 million in infrastructure money this year. So this, we certainly have, we will have the money to be able to do something like this, which, you know, needs to be done desperately. It's gonna connect all the way from Grandview in front of Ratliff. They actually really needs to go all the way to 385, but...
Yes.
We talked about that, it's only two-lane down there too. You've got all that new stuff going in front of Ratliff that Larry Lee's doing.
And that's why we participated on the Grandview Yukon Intersection.
Right.
The city's participating in, in that intersection with his development and to build out that entire intersection.
You'll be able to go all the way to the airport, so...
Joe mentioned annexation, what, what does that take to get that done?
Would have to be obviously voluntary annexation at this point, but, well, you're talking about getting the road in from the county, though?
I'm talking about adjacent to the road.
So anything adjacent, obviously, those, those private properties there would have to agree to come into the city. My guess is that would probably come as part of a development agreement.
Okay, thank you.
But the right-of-way, the road is in the middle of the right-of-way, where it looks like it is.
Right now, the right-of-way, the 130-foot right-of-way is in the city. When it was annexed, all that was annexed is the right-of-way.
Not the road.
Yeah, and the road, yes.
And the road, that's what I thought.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions on Yukon?
The other piece of Yukon I bring up is not part of the widening, but it's the intersection down there at 191. That intersection, we're working on a project there to get that signalized. That, I've got a engineering firm working, I think we'll have the RFQ finished up with them this week. And they will design that signal for us. And my understanding is we'll work with ODC as well on that to get that funded. But that, that needs to be a signal. Tech dot just recently finished that overpass, but they didn't include the signal work at the base of it. So we're working on a LOSA, which is an agreement with the, with Tech Dot. Where we will take over that project, build it, and then give it back to Tech Dot. It'll be their signal, but we're gonna be working on a interlocal agreement to actually do that work.
But at least they already wired it.
They, yeah, they're putting in the foundations today. They called me this morning, actually, I told them it's not my project, but... But they wanted to go from 36 to 48-inch foundation, I said, go for it.
Good, all right. Anything else? All right, let's go to, let's go to Faudry.
Faudry is a fun project as well. It's actually two projects, one city, one private. The city project, we kicked off in January 2023. We're about 70% complete on it. It's a big project, $33 million project to widen Faudry from 191 up to Yukon. Quite a bit of drainage in it, but we're actually moving forward. I drove it today just to get it fresh in my mind again. We're working on the west side, putting in curb and gutter, but we're putting in the last driveway. Those driveways are extensive because we're actually crossing drainage, so there's box coverts and everything on those driveways. But we should be paving the west side from P-Bar up to Yukon soon. And then we can move traffic and jump on the east side of the road and it'll speed up significantly when we do that. The other private project, as you know, is the Bell Project, north of Yukon up to Amy Road, that will run by the Sports Complex. They're moving forward with that, they're pouring curb and gutter today on that one. And... And there was a major holdup with Encore. The new line is in. It's not energized, so right now we got two lines. But as soon as I get that new line energized, they can start pulling poles down and then we'll have a, a clear right-of-way to build that road.
Do you have any questions? Yeah, let me interject one thing, Joe, that came to my mind that in the interim, while we're still having to use that stoplight at P-Bar and Yukon... In the, Chief Gurkha, you can help me out here because you drive that every day, every day. That signal is timed backwards, in my opinion. I'm getting a lot of complaints because if you're going from P-Bar to the west and you get to Faudry, it's like 30 seconds. Or it's like three minutes or whatever. And when it turns green going north, it's real short. And it's, by the time it turns green, it's backed up, way back to Shallow, right, Chief? Would you agree? Yeah, so I'm saying, rush hours around here.
Eight and five.
All, all the way back down to Shallow, and that's, we just could...
Yeah, it's pretty good ways.
Yeah, there's not that much coming in or out of P-Bar, I wouldn't think. But maybe there is, but at least I haven't seen it. So anyway, you travel, sorry, didn't mean to put you in a bind, but you travel it every day and I know that, so... Thank you. Anybody look at on that, Joe, from a timing perspective?
We'll look at that signal timing.
Would you look it for me? I keep forgetting to ask you, but since we're talking about it.
Yeah, not a problem, we'll check that out.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. Yeah, anybody else have any questions on Faudry? If not, let's go to 56.
56 also runs 338 over to Faudry Road. We actually have plans on the shelf for this one. We've, it's a two-lane county road, but it's been designed as a five-lane. We've got the design done. Construction estimate on this one's about 25 million to build it right now. We are moving forward with obtaining right-of-way. We don't have all the right-of-way needed to build the project today, but I've got a consultant finishing up those right-of-way documents this week. I talked to him yesterday and he promised them to me this week. We're looking at six different right-of-way dedications, just because there's several entities we need right-of-way from, and three easements. So once I get those, then we start the process of obtaining the right-of-way through donation, purchase, condemnation, however we end up having to go. So we'll get all that right-of-way in. Next step will be some utility work. There's gonna be, there's overhead utilities that are in the way. All that will have to move prior to any construction. So there's, uh, there's work to do, but we are moving forward with it. We don't have to have funding for construction yet, but we'll get to that point. One other caveat that I'm working on is I'm looking at, I've got a firm looking at a intersection control evaluation at Billy Hext and, and 56. This is a high-traffic intersection right next to that school. We did a bunch of traffic counts back when school was in session. Right now it's a four-way stop. And I'm, and this might be a dirty word to some of you, but I'm looking at a roundabout at that intersection. And I think it'll really improve traffic flow through there. It'll be safer and I'm excited about how that comes out. But I've got a firm working at that for me. And if, if it comes back as justified and as the way to go, we'll work that into our design. You're shaking your head, Council.
I go through the one over in Midland and I'm aggravated. I have to...
I go through the one over in Midland, and I'm aggravated. I have to slow down to nothing and crawl through there, so.
There's a lot of studies out there that say they are definitely safer than even a four-way, even a traffic signal.
You're not doing any studies in England, are you?
I think, I, we'll see. I'm not committing to it yet, but we are looking at it.
So the other thing we need to do, Mayor, is, is in that conversation with anything on Yukon that borders, uh, Ponderosa, I've had preliminary conversations with the judge about that, uh, because on the north side of that fifty-sixth, that's county property.
That's correct.
And there's only two ways in and out of Ponderosa. So I guess you and I need to do a tag team on the judge and try to get them to do something for us there, one way or the other. Uh, they've got their own paving department now, so that was one of the things we kind of kicked around at the retreat, was us doing curb and gutter, and then with their new equipment, perhaps doing the paving. But I want them to have some practice first.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, they, because there's only two ways in and out of Ponderosa. People of Ponderosa are gonna be in trouble.
Yeah, and of course, we'll have to maintain that access. We can't, can't, that's always part of any major project like this, is maintaining traffic.
Any may have any questions for Joe on the fifty-sixth street? If not, let's go, last one, Dorado Drive.
Dorado Drive is a, is a project we started last year. Um, the road's badly deteriorated. We've got drainage issues at Santa Fe and Dorado. So we have worked with an engineer. We have a design to reconstruct Dorado. We looked at changing up some islands and finally backed off on it, so we're leaving the islands. We are putting in some additional drainage that crosses, uh, Michael Forrest and Kirk Edwards' property right there north of Dorado, a little bit west of Santa Fe, so that flume across those two properties will clean up that drainage, and we can fix that intersection. It won't be underwater like it is now. That project is designed, it's been bid, it's out for bid right now, with bids due July ninth. So we're, we, our estimates, two point nine three million on it's what we're expecting. Uh, we should be under construction this fall.
Fantastic. Any may have any questions?
I would like, I'd leave in the medians is fine, but I sure would like to see us take the ground and zeoscape it instead of, because it gets awful ugly looking before parks gets over to mow it. And I know that we've had issues, people cutting water on and off, and a lot of those trees have died. Those were privately donated. Uh, so I, I just think it's, you know, Aaron, I don't know what your thoughts are. You, you live up that direction, right?
We've, actually, Joe and I have talked about that, is potentially doing that as a change order on the project.
Good.
And I, I don't disagree. I mean, we're, we're the near desert, and sometimes we don't act like it.
What does it cost that on Dorado?
It's, uh, it's gonna be a three million dollar project. And that's right, Aaron and I discussed that. Once we get a, a ward, we'll approach that contractor and look at pulling that grass out, putting some zeoscape and changing up. It's all got irrigation, but we'll change it up to bubblers for the trees.
Yeah.
Do some things different.
Yeah, the irrigation's already there.
Can I be mean, or do I just need to keep it to myself?
Be gentle, me.
Be gentle? Okay, I just added up eighty-five billion dollars.
Yes, sir.
I've asked for a hundred thousand dollar light. How come I can't get it in District One? I spent it eighty-five, all the money is always being spent, and I understand they pay higher taxes. But when you pay taxes to the city, you split the money for the whole city. I've asked for a hundred dollar turn signal, hundred thousand dollar light for a left turn signal, and I can't get it. But we got eighty-five million dollars right here in the same area. Yeah, it's a growing area, but it's still part of the city of Odessa. And I've also asked for some pavement, uh, I've asked you to try to get a price, and I know it can't be done now, but in the next year, because all I hear, even before I become city councilman, I don't know how much money we're gonna spend on Fodry. Money, 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 everything is Fodry, Fodry, Fodry. Now, I've asked for a hundred thousand dollar left turn signal because the school teachers, I have eight schools in my district. Four of them in one block. Why they built it like that, we don't know. But the teachers are complaining about a left turn signal.
Where at? What's, which intersection?
Grant and M L K now.
Grant and M L K.
Soon as you go in the other path. A lot of teachers get on their turn left to go to Blackshear and all those four school parents too, and there's a little problem in the mornings and in the evenings, turning left at that intersection. You have to wait. Matter of fact, some, I, I was trying to see who it was yesterday, one of the engineering trucks, he had to take a chance and turn. I was behind because there's no left turn. You have to wait. There's no left turn signal. So, I mean, is it anything we can get that done before school starts again?
I have.
School's out now, it's not a big problem, and Chief, if you'll go back and look, I think there've been about four accidents there in the last three or four weeks. It's getting to be a bad intersection because people have to take a chance to turn that left turn there, to come back east.
To answer your question, I have been in conversation with Text Dot on that. That's, that is Text Dot.
Well, I'm just saying, and I've already talked to you about, let's try and get a couple of streets, me and you talk, I'm not gonna bring it up, in District One, I'm not just gonna say the south side, but every week we're talking about spending a hundred million dollars out of, every week. Let's split some of that. You know, when I first ran, some of you know I ran on a piece of pie. My idea was, we want a piece of pie. We want a piece of that pie. You see her, you see her diagram while it open, it had a pie in there. Give us a piece of pie. Just give us a piece. We don't want it all. Just give us a little bit. And it, and everybody, hey, I'm happy with everything, but if we keep letting it deteriorate, it's gonna cost us more in the future, just like the water's costing us now.
Yes, sir.
And I, and I, and I try to talk to you sometime, but I don't know if it's going, I don't know if I need to get it out with everybody to, to see that, hey, look, let's, let's just try to get a, but that traffic signal, we need to work on it if you don't mind, okay?
I will.
All right, thank you.
I will.
Bring us your report in a couple of weeks, if you can. I mean, I'm not sure they go to traffic or engineering, but just see what.
We, we would need, we would need to work with Text Dot on that, and that's not a problem, to have him take.
Text Dot like, so.
It won't be a problem for us to reach out to Text Dot, have a conversation with them, see what can be done.
It really needs to be a left turn signal.
Now, now, Text Dot could come back and say, we won't fund it. Now, that doesn't mean that the city couldn't put it in as a, if it, if, if, if it was, if they called it warranted and they would allow for it, then the city could pay for it if that was the prerogative of the council as, as part of a project.
And I have made, I have discussed that.
I think you had a clicker there or something.
Yes, sir. I have discussed that with Text Dot. I don't know if they've got their warrants done yet, but I will follow up with them on it.
He'll bring Text Dot with you next time. I'll tell him about it.
Thanks, Joe. We appreciate it.
Anytime.
All right.
Thanks, Joe. Let's call in Alex. We got a couple of reports on the treatment, water treatment plant and Darrington plant.
Pick your poison. Which one you want first?
I'll do the water treatment plant.
All right.
Perfect. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're gonna go ahead and just jump right into the construction schedule, which is what everybody's wondering about. Uh, I'm gonna start off with a notice to proceed, so that was, uh, there you go. Uh, we started off in January of twenty twenty-two. Our original schedule substantial was supposed to be complete July twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, or sorry, July twenty-three, yeah. Final completion was supposed to be October sixth. Since then, um, the current contractor, um, has had two approved, uh, schedule changes from council. Um, currently, um, the revised, uh, schedule that they have given to us with the proposed change order that will be taken to council the next council session, uh, we're going to be asking to change that substantial completion uh, to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five, and the final completion April ninth, twenty twenty-six. Any questions on the schedule?
It's too long.
It is. We're, we're running into some challenges right now, and so that's kind of where I'm gonna get into right now, so.
Okay, good.
Um, some of the challenges that the city is, has incurred on our side, um, has been with existing valves. As you know, I've come to council and previous directors have come to council, uh, having issues being able to oscillate, um, clear wells, oscillate effluent lines within our plant. Um, we, uh, actually had to approve another one two weeks ago last week for an emergency line stop because we couldn't stop, uh, an, an issue with inside the plant. Um, so, um, that's the majority of the issues that we're running into inside the plant is existing conditions that were not taken care of or known about whenever we designed this back in twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, and, and when it was let to bid in, uh, twenty twenty-one, so. Uh, one of the large things for this upcoming change order that they're requesting is, uh, the original design when it was signed and sealed and done back in eighteen nineteen. Uh, some of the loading dock rooms did not have, um, approved, or did not have fire suppression. Uh, since we, the code changed at that point, uh, when these were signed and sealed, they were sent in to us. The fire marshal and the contractor and our team and the engineer have been working together to get that finalized. They wanted us to redirect how the water came into the buildings because the loading docks were in a different spot. Plus, we now have had to add fire suppression to rooms that we did not think were added, so. Uh, and then some of the existing conditions on the valves, um, they're also asking for time that they didn't know that they were gonna incur at the time when we did the valve changes or line stops or any emergency issues, and so they're asking for an additional on this upcoming proposed change order. Uh, next, I just wanted to start with the original, or I mean, at the start of the project, you know, we let this during COVID, so we had quite a bit of, uh, supply chain issues with electrical switchgear. Uh, we have switchgear in all of our buildings, colder pump stations, the new chemical building facilities for the new plant, uh, the settling basin also, and for our, uh, build, our main building. Uh, and some of those lead times have been twelve months plus from the original, um, you know, lead time or let date of the project. So there's been a lot of time and issues with trying to get some of this, these parts. Um, also, something that we're incurring right now is with our plant, our new plant one, our settling basin. Um, the contractor received stainless steel parts. We're talking washers, nuts and bolts, certain things like that for all the plate settlers and, uh, stuff that's inside of our plant. Uh, we noticed once we did a trial run on the plant that we had corrosion within our plant. These washers, nuts and bolts were stamped stainless steel, look like stainless steel. They are not stainless steel. So they have had an outside contractor come in. We are working on currently removing all of the old parts inside of the plant one. Now, we're, you know, at the same expense, putting it back in, so, uh, or at the contractor's expense, and they're doing that by themselves. Um, but, uh, we have run into an issue with this, this plant being able to get a T C U certified, um, now with, with this issue. So we're still working on removing all of those parts, um, and like I said, the contractor, you know, it, it, I've looked at the nuts and bolts, and it stainless steel looks to me until you get it underneath some water, and then next thing you know, it's starting to rust, so.
Alex, let me ask you something about that. Can we not hold them responsible for, uh, having sold us, if you will, something that wasn't what it was supposed to have been?
So we can't. Uh, you, you know, we have certain things within our contract that, that lets us do that, you know? If, if their time does run past, uh, their allotted contractual date, then there are some things, um, that we could do legally, liquidated damages, certain things like that, as much as, you know, you try not to do those things. But yes, if, if they run over their contractual date due to something, uh, an issue on their end, yes, there are things that the city can, can't do to kind of get repercussions from that.
So we use a local supplier on the stainless steel bolts and nuts?
I would have to reach out to them and get with them.
That's quite a few here.
Because there's quite a few here, and so to me, they should take responsibility for that.
And they are. They're, they're doing it at, at their own expense. You know, they're not asking for any extra time or day, or any extra time, so. Anything to that nature, however long it takes, if it takes past the contracted date, then, then they're liable for certain things within the contract.
The only question I have is that you just said they're gonna come back and ask for, they moved the extension date.
So that, that's.
So I'm not sure I'm willing, be willing to do that because that gets them out of any penalty for not finishing on time.
For a certain thing.
They're already gonna miss that.
For sure. For certain things that they're gonna ask for in this next proposed change order, they're only asking for, for the fire suppression, and then the extra time that we've all had when we have had, had to include line stops or any emergency projects or any issues, existing conditions within the plant, they're not, uh, their proposed change order does not include anything on their end.
Well, do you know if they stopped using that company or sending them?
Yeah, so they, they brought in an outside contractor who is, uh, it's called J M, yeah, it's, yes, sir, they have. So we'll go to the next slide. Some more, uh, project challenges on the contractor side that I wanted to speak about. Uh, so they're building, and a mechanical subcontractor has had to be replaced. Um, they pretty much walked on the job, so they had to reallocate and find a different contractor for H VAC, mechanical, um, which has been replacing. We've seen a, a massive change from the last subcontractor to now. Um, and our electrical and instrumentation subcontractors have had a very slow ramp up from the beginning. They've had a very large issue with having people here in Texas. Um, they hired an outside contractor for their I N C. Uh, they pretty much pulled out of, out of Texas. Um, so they moved, went somewhere else, so they're, they're having to subcontract and certain things like that, which I'll get to, uh, in the next slide on kind of how they're changing and how they're trying to ramp up and get us back on schedule as close as we can. Well, I mean, we're way past schedule, but as close as we can expedite things. So this is the status of the individual disciplines. Uh, so Garnier G C, uh, they've now dedicated an onsite scheduler for coordinating the electrical and I N C, and that's where we are hurting the most when it comes to the, the finishing of this plant. Our electrical is the last portion, startup and commissioning is the last portion. I N C SCADA, our SCADA department, where we're having to integrate change SCADA systems to where we can go digital with absolutely everything within the plant. Um, they have brought in, at the city's request, with, for no charge, somebody to come in and make sure that they are expediting absolutely everything on the electrical side and on the I N C side. The following disciplines can be deemed that they're substantial completion, so structurally. Uh, structurally, we pretty much are running with all new filters, so everything that's in the plant. Uh, the new plant one is built structurally all the way, other than, uh, the nuts and bolts, like I spoke about. The plant is pretty much functional. When we get finished with the chemical building, getting electricity run through there and I N C run through there also, then we will be able to test our plant one. We'll be able to put it up for T C U certification. Um, and that is also something I want to explain a little bit about. T C U takes a hundred and twenty days to approve a plant like this being put into commission. We are going to work, what, work with T C U to see if we can expedite, expedite that up to sixty days, but maximum, they normally take a hundred and twenty days. So that's why the April completion date is so long. If we can get it quicker, we could be done a little bit faster than April. Um, but structurally, architecturally, process, mechanical, H VAC, building is all in place and it's being used. Um, but really where we lack is civil, electrical, instrumentation. That's where a lot of this startup and commissioning, which is gonna take at least nine months to where we can start everything up, work the bugs out, make sure that everything is working properly, chemical buildings, uh, and our SCADA network across, um, the Darrington plant, because we're also adding SCADA there. We're also adding it on all of the offsites, so raw water pump stations, um, and lift stations and things like that, too. So as, as, as bad as it sounds, we are kind of on the downhill slope when it turns to that. Um, and so I just wanted to talk about the remaining critical work, uh, which is electrical, I N C. Uh, we have a plant two raw water tie-in right from C R M W D to tie directly to their, uh, Ward County line and our, their, their regular lines from across the street into our plant two raw water. Um, also, uh, our civil site grading and roads, we're putting all new concrete roads there that still need to be done. And some, uh, this building, the caustic building, the old caustic will be demolished too, so there's some demolishing, uh, things that we need to do. Our punch lists and then T C U coordination, like I talked about. We're gonna try and simplify that number and make it to about sixty days instead of a hundred and twenty days. And then startup and commissioning is, is our longest and probably around the nine month, you know, around, I don't wanna say nine months. Hopefully, around six months is what they're saying, six to nine months. Any other questions on that? I know it's not what we want to hear.
Can I ask a few questions on that, just in case this.
Absolutely, Keith.
Comes back a little bit. Uh, key stretcher, by the way.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, how much retainage did the city?
Five percent.
Five percent?
Yes, sir.
Five percent?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a 71 and a half million dollar project with about $2 million owner allowance, and then we've had about.
And we've got that cash in bank, we've got it. We actually have, we have it or is it part of the contract?
It's within the contract, but I think, I mean, we had to go to a CO for that, right? Yeah.
Yes, we received the bond proceeds. Yes.
We have it or is it part of the contract? I'm just trying.
Would that be part of the contract or would that?
Are you asking if the contractor put up that five percent?
Yeah, do we have it? Does the city of Odessa have it right now?
We have it, we received the bond proceeds and we allocated 71 million dollars from those proceeds to the project, and we also allocated a specific dollar amount for contingency.
Okay, so we have.
So we have it unless we have expended the contingency.
Yeah, we shouldn't have spent any contingency with, with that. Okay, so we've got five percent. I assume they put up a payment bond, performance bond?
Yes, sir.
Or did we require a, a letter of credit?
So we have performance bonds for this.
Performance bond, do we have a, okay, performance bond, okay. And you said an extension of time?
Yes, sir.
And I thought I heard you say that the only extension would be issues caused by the city, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So the only extension they'll get is some issue that we may have contributed to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the TCU, is that a city, do we put it in the contract, is it their requirement or will it be ours to get that approval?
So it's their, it's their, they have to get that approval.
They have to do it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what's the liquidated damages in this contract?
Substantial, $5,000 a day.
$5,000 a day.
And final 3,500.
Okay, because I, I think you know that, the concern is if we, if we grant an extension, we want to make sure that we've still got liquidated damages.
Absolutely, we, we still, they're still in effect, and I have explained to them that with this last, this is the last change order that I'm going to bring back to you guys unless there is a change of scope. I have made that very clear to them, we should be, this project should have been finished, like I said, in 2024, so we have made it very clear to our contractor that we will, I will not be accepting any other change orders unless there's a change of scope from the city.
Okay, just don't let that five percent get away from you.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thanks, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Keith.
Thanks, Keith, that's, that's the question I was trying to ask, I didn't know how to ask it though.
Well, I don't know if I did it.
I don't know either, but. I just want, you know, that, that five percent gives you some leverage.
Yeah.
It sure does, and we still have that, yes, sir.
Good, excellent.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we know it's not your fault, but it is so frustrating to hear.
Absolutely.
The different dates and see, keep seeing different dates and even, I mean, I get it when we change the code, they need to now put a suppression system, and I get that, but it will be ready last year.
Absolutely.
A year ago.
And we, and, and Mr.
It's 90% done, Cal.
And, and Mr. Councilman Stoker and I had that conversation when it came to, even the last time I came up here and we told you guys September, it was because that was the schedule that they were giving us.
I'm not blaming you, but I am pretty upset with Gert, Gert.
Gert, Garni.
Garni.
Maybe had it him too.
I will say they have brought in upper management now, and this onsite scheduler is an actual upper management, you know, around that COO status for this project that they've brought on. We've seen significant changes in the last month with that person being here, being able to expedite certain subcontractors and making sure that their people are doing correct things as we continue this project to get it done as fast as we can.
Well, you can certainly tell him the mayor and council are not very pleased with their job.
Yes, sir.
I mean, his fault, their fault, nobody's fault. It doesn't matter, you're so far past the due date.
We are, yes, sir.
It's, it's beyond frustrating.
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry.
And Craig, yes, you'll have to sign another non-disclosure agreement because it'll always stay to the art and nobody else will know it.
I think that one holds, it didn't have an end date, so.
All right.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we're good, let's go to Darrington.
Perfect. So this is the update on the Darrington, so we have split it up into four phases, so right now we're in phase one, so I brought you guys the condition assessment, process evaluation and facility master plan that we're currently doing with them. Our phase two is going to be design of the selected improvements and preparation of contract documents, so plans and specs for the design that we're looking at, at bringing on for that plant, and then advertising bid, and then construction, startup, commissioning, improvements of that plant. So we're currently in phase one. Right now, we're going to assess the condition of the facilities and equipment to determine the remaining life that we have of our current facilities and see if we can rehab, reuse, or if we need to build a new, new portions of the plant. We're looking, we're also looking at capacity requirements for future and growth. Currently, right now, we are pretty much topped out with what our processes, how our processes are and how old they are and what we can actually take in right now. So we're looking at what we're bringing within the master plans, how many people we're seeing growth wise, what we need to actually make the plant. Currently, right now, it's 12.7 MGD, million gallons a day is what we can take in, we really only take in about seven to seven and a half, and we're, we're, we're pretty much at our max right now just because our processes are so in, in rough shape. We're going to evaluate our hydraulic profile and compare them to the TCU requirements, analyze upgraded treatment, we're looking at either keeping our aeration basins or going into a BNR or MBNR, which is a different treatment process, so that's the, the new stuff, Mr. Smith wants the lagoons, which is, which is also a treatment process and it's, it's totally different than what you see, but it, it's an old treatment process, but it's actually fun to look at. And then we're going to prepare a facility master plan with improvements, give you guys some level cost estimates on what it would be for new plant, for, you know, certain phases within that plant, you know, if we need to go and just do aeration basins or if we need to do our clarifiers or if we need to do our bar screens, certain things like that. Status of phase one, so we conducted a three-day onsite condition assessment where we walked around with the engineer onsite to make sure that they could see where we were structurally, where we were process HVAC, any, went and checked all of our bar screens, anything that we did, it was a three-day explanation of what working condition was, they took pictures of all the pumps, all of our reuse pumps, anything that we handled within the plant, they went and did a three-day condition assessment. We've sent them all of our current flows that flow into the plant, wastewater quality, the current quality of all of what we're putting into the draw or what we're selling to Pioneer or Exxon, and then what we're actually getting into the plant from our distribution system, our collection system, sorry. We're going to end up meeting with Corolo in August on those findings, and then the anticipated schedule here is seven months for this phase one. Any questions on the phase one? So here's our anticipated schedule, now it looks long, but I want to, let me, let me just get to phase four, so condition assessment, process evaluation is seven months, the design of the selected improvement can be anywhere between 12 and 18 months, so that depends. Are we looking at a full-blown new plant? Are we looking at something, you know, between 300 to 350 million, or are we going to phase it in certain aspects where we do 50 million here, a couple of years later, do we do another 75 million here? How do we, how do we phase it to make sure that, you know, we spend our money correctly, but make sure that we're handling our treatment processes and following all of our TCU requirements and recommendations that we need to follow? So that can be anywhere from 12 to 18 months. We'll advertise and bid and give the award, and then construction and startup, so this is also, you know, very flexible when it comes to what we decide and which direction we move in, are we going to just rehab some parts, are we going to build new, are we going to handle that? So it's going to take a little bit, that number, that number would be if we were pretty much to build, you know, an 80% new plant is what that would be, is at 37 months. So that's kind of what the anticipated schedule is, but we still have a lot, a long way to get from condition assessment and process evaluations and what we decided to move forward in what direction. And that's it.
Guys, any questions, Relics?
So I've got one, so you're saying you're only be able, you're only able to intake in process seven and a half million?
So that's, that's currently what we take in right now, right?
Right.
We, we just have trouble, some of our processes, our, our aeration basins right now, they are six foot, five foot 11, and we are implementing a grit removal system, but for 40, 50 years, we've never had a grit removal system. So in portions of the ditch, we only have about three to four foot to play with, which is pretty much, there's grit there, so we don't have the detention time to treat the wastewater properly, which we are working on trying to get that grit out of there, we're working on a project right now to do that. So that's what I mean when we say we can't really necessarily treat the seven and a half on the capacity side.
Right, so that's what I was worried about with all the, with all the growth up in the Northeast as counseling. To my right, mentioned, you know, how much more strain is that putting on the plant?
It, it will, but right now, like I said, we're okay, and that's, one of our main focuses are these aeration basins to make sure that we can treat and house that while it's being treated within the plant, so that's really what we're focusing on first. If you're asking me for a timeline on when that's going to happen, I guess that depends on growth. You know, if, if we were to start this process right now and build a whole new plant, it would be five, six years, you know, construction wise total, if that's a full-blown plant. So if you're looking at five years, I still think we're in, we're in okay, good, okay enough shape to be able to handle the growth on that side.
Well, that's the question, I guess.
Again, again, and that, we, I'll be really honest with you guys, the, the plant is in bad shape, we all know that, and that's why we're, that's why we've started with this condition assessment to figure out where we're at, to say, okay, do we have enough money with the city allocated for this project, and how much do we do and what phases do we need to handle that properly? So if, as long as we do our due diligence, and that's why we decided to kind of move away from the direction we were going in, to make sure that we could find some sound defensible evidence on this is why we're making these decisions to spend certain types of money that we're going to end up having to spend, that's kind of the direction that we chose.
Yeah, well, I just, you know, I have a rough estimate about how many homes are going up.
For sure.
And that's why we, we, I really took a push on getting that new tower working on
right now, so we can make sure on the north side, we're going to be able to handle all of the water, you know, pressure issues, and the sports complex is going to bring in a lot of growth in that area, too, so that's why we're, I really had a push to make sure that we could handle that, too.
Yeah.
Water-wise.
Well, I appreciate that because.
Absolutely.
Number of houses is just in.
They, they are building them like ants.
He doesn't cross Dixie, so he doesn't have any idea, I'm going to have to haul him up there one of these days.
Okay, guys, do we have any questions?
Oh, Alex, just, just one for the.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of different things, you said on a new plant, five to six years.
If, if you were to, to start design right now, design would take 12 to 18 months, and then after that it'd be probably four years. I mean, you look at the water treatment facility, it's taken four years, or the wa, yeah, the water treatment's taken four years, so I would assume five years for.
What is your timeframe on remaining life?
So we're, that's what we're looking at right now.
Okay, so that's.
Yes, sir, that's what this first phase is, is to really look and, and look at every single aspect.
Yes, ma'am. And we are putting a lot of funds into the plant, we've done a lot.
Yeah, currently, right now, we're putting in about 3 million in a grit removal system, which is a lot, and that's going to help us be able to pull all of the grit out of the detention basins or aeration basins, which could significantly, if we can go in there and dredge the aeration basins, give us time, give us some more time.
But the point that I'm getting to, throwing a couple of facts here and there, in your opinion, to the council, let me speak for you and then you can say, is that we need to start thinking about a new plant. How serious is that, that statement? And I'm looking at.
Your, your statement is correct.
Okay, it's, it's serious.
Structurally, if, when we walked around that plant, it was very, the engineer was very eye-opening when they walked around structurally, I will just say that. There are a lot of structural issues within our aeration basins, which is where we do most of our treatment, where we have issues.
They wouldn't allow me to look at it, how's that during the election?
You're more than.
It was too dangerous.
Y'all, I will say this, you guys are more than welcome to come out and look at it, I'm more than welcome, Melissa, our plant manager, would love to give you a tour, she would very much invite you guys out there, pick a day where it's not 100 degrees, is what I would say.
So this is why we don't kick stuff down the road.
Yeah, and if I heard what you said right, not only do we, is it probably, I won't say an emergency, but it, but it's going to be, it's going to be 3 to 500, 3 to 500 million.
I would say yes, sir, if you want a shiny new plant, it's going to be very expensive, yes.
But if we keep patching, we go ahead up to that.
Alex, how far back ago, if that makes any sense, how far back ago did we, did this city realize that it needed a new water treatment?
A, a, a new plant, is that what you're asking? I was not around, I, I can attest to that, I do know that in 2019, when we started the water treatment facility, the director at the time had also reached out to the current engineer that is on this project on exactly what I have them doing. I think it was in a pretty rough state at that point also, and it, you know, now we're about five, six years in advance from there, so I would say quite a while. And we'll be, we'll be honest with you, the plant was built in the 70s, there was an addition in the 90s. Ever since then, there has been very little work done on that plant. I'll be really hon, there's been very little that has, has been put back into the plant.
It's an important part of infrastructure, though, because if that plant stops, the city stops.
Absolutely, it's just like our water treatment facility, if, if we don't have anywhere where we can flush our toilets, and we have to treat it properly also, it's not just a place to just sit it and, and it goes into a lagoon somewhere and sits, we have to treat it properly by TCU requirements, and then if we do that, we can also use it to sell to reuse customers, which is another huge factor in what we're doing right now, so. And we're, we're also looking at certain things with that, too, within this, within our master plan, so.
Jim, any other questions?
I don't know, maybe we need to start looking at, at putting something in our city charter that all of this needs to be maintained, period.
I think.
Before it becomes a disaster.
Council, I think this is a statewide problem, you know, the last legislature just, they just gave $20 billion for water infrastructure. Because we're not the only city that kicked a can down the road.
Yeah.
But we're just, we're feeling it because it's our city, but I think a lot of people have done that.
I will say, if you, if you look across the board and you talk to the engineering companies that we handle, deal with on a day-to-day basis, you know, Kimley Horns, Corolos, anybody to that nature, they will tell you they have all of these same problems, even all of the problems that we handle at our water treatment facility, they have them all. Amarillo just went to, is going to go to bond for a 700 million dollar wastewater facility. They're going to bond for, I think, well, the last time I heard was like 1.6 million dollars for a wastewater, 1.6 billion.
Billion.
Dollars for wastewater infrastructure because they're having the same issue.
Very frustrating.
Chump change. All right, we appreciate, thanks very much, Alex.
Thank you guys very much.
All right, Charles, we'll call you up for Gallagher study.
Mayor, Council, I hope this is going to be much better news than that.
I know.
We'll see. I haven't set the bar very high.
That's right.
So just to familiarize everyone, make sure we're all on the same page with where we are in the Gallagher study. Back in June of 2024, council approved the project. In October, Gallagher came in and visited with council on two occasions to get some direction on how we wanted the project to proceed, and that last meeting, I think the consensus was to go with a 50 percentile as far as moving everyone in that direction. Now, they've done a lot of work, in the meantime, they've worked with our project lead on the issue, and she was able to work with them to get our job descriptions reviewed. They talked about the process they have to take collection of information from our employees, find out kind of what they did, and then try to help inform them on how to group our jobs a little bit better, see if we had any gaps in that area. That work's been completed. We have had an opportunity, Mr. Smith, myself, were given an opportunity to work with that and fine tune that for our area. We addressed some particular issues I think council had brought up at the last meeting, which was, Mr. Thompson brought up some plant operations issues that we compete with the oil fields, some of those types of things. Those got incorporated, we also made some decisions to focus their efforts on moving our lower tier positions, our entry level positions, to a more livable wage range. And to do. And to do that, we ended up compressing some of the structure in that bottom area. Not the bad kind of compression, but bringing the bottom rate up and just understanding that people are gonna transition out of those entry-level positions. In any case, we have got the results on campus. Uh, they have presented what their impact would be if we followed all of their recommendations. That information has been turned over to finance, to city management. Uh, those are being evaluated along with the budget meetings, uh, just to see what the actual impact is gonna be. Uh, so each of the departments now are going through the process of evaluating their staffing needs. We now have the numbers to be able to put around those. Uh, from that, our next step is going to be Gallagher coming onsite to do their final presentation for council. We contacted them regarding our two dates in July. And they were unavailable on the eighth, but they can be here on the twenty-second so that they can present their final information prior to your budget retreat. Uh, it wasn't as early as we wanted, but they had vacation plans around Fourth of July, apparently. Let's see, beyond that, the information that finance and city management is working through is going to be able to give you a hard number as far as what the impact is gonna be on our pay plan, uh, what the new pay plan would look like, what the cost of that is gonna be. The maintenance piece of that will be an administrative tool that Gallagher will turn over to us. They're gonna train the H R staff on that when they come down on the twenty-second to do your meeting. Now, there were two phases of the plan that were terminated. Uh, the performance management plan and the job description reviews were not completed as part of this R F B. Other than that, do you have any questions?
We really wanted to know when they were gonna finish it. Now you've told us, we're, I'm excited about it, so I say we invite them here to the twenty-second and let's, because we need it before budget.
Yes, sir.
I thought it took an unreasonable long, lengthy amount of time personally.
That was the hope, is to get the information in time for you to be able to make some decisions around the budgeting process to have some actual hard numbers to work with.
Thank you, Charles. Anybody have questions? Gilbert?
No, but when does our budget, July seventeenth?
And the retreat is July twenty-eighth, Monday.
So that will be six days.
After.
After the presentation.
Be the following week?
Yeah. It's already on the calendar. All right, gentlemen, any questions for Charles? We'll get the Gallagher report, I guess, in July.
Thank you.
Awesome. Charles, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I apologize. I failed to, uh, recognize two people that are here at the DIAS today. Unfortunately, our city manager, David Vella, is sick. Uh, he's unable to be here, so Aaron, welcome to the DIAS. We also want to welcome Keith Stretcher. Uh, Keith has been hired as a, uh, outside counsel to assist us, uh, in the legal department. Uh, he has a short career, middling, about thirty-five years or something. And he was an appellate judge at the Eastland Court of Appeals. Uh, he has since retired, and so he's gonna be helping us out. Uh, so if you don't know Keith, please introduce yourself. If you want to say a prayer for David, I think he's very sick. Uh, he went to the hospital. So say a prayer for David, um, tonight, uh, wish him the best. So with that said, we are adjourned to a council.
Excuse me, Mayor?
No.
The sports complex?
No, we gotta, we gotta hear from Eric.
Oh, yeah. Not on the list.
Yeah, it is.
If you want to look at my list.